Good morning and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I am Councilman Kahari Mosley and I chair the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. For this hearing, we will hear from the Pittsburgh Housing Authority and the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. But we're going to start with the Housing Authority. I'd like to invite those from the Housing Authority to join us at the table. And while they are joining us, I ask our Budget Director Peter McDevitt to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. The Housing Authority's mission is to bring higher quality of life to the city of Pittsburgh residents by creating safe, affordable housing in conjunction with comprehensive support services, attentive property management, and forward-thinking real estate development strategies. HACP is governed by a Board of Commissioners. The Board is charged with tasks establishing goals, approving policies, and budgets, and providing general direction to the Executive Director. Currently, Councilman Kahari Mosley serves on the HACP Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. And before our department begins, I do want to announce that we are joined by my colleague, Councilwoman Strausberger. So, members of the Housing Authority's team of leadership, please introduce yourself, including your title.
Yeah, my name is Cass DeBinyan. I am the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. I have some of my staff here, so we can start introducing them.
Bernie McGinley, the Chief Financial Officer.
I'm Andy Tenny, the Controller.
Darnell Parker, Budget Manager.
Thank you. I also want to announce that we are joined by my esteemed colleague, Councilwoman Warwick. And now you can begin your presentation.
So, we're going to talk about the Housing Authority budget for FY '25. We have a budget, 212,951 million dollars, or some change. So, we're going to present a presentation. Darnell, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Is that... Sorry, are we cued in to bring that up, or no? Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay.
So, we're in the process of preparing the presentation. It'll take about another one minute, hopefully. And we would get started with the Housing Authority budget and some other information regarding the Housing Authority.
Thank you, Director DeBinyan.
Okay. Please don't presentation mode. Down in the corner. I'm sorry. Go ahead. There we go. Excuse me. Okay. You got it?
Yeah, we're good.
Can you see that floor? Okay, we are talking about the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Primarily, the first slide depicts the staff of the Housing Authority and the primary staff, and also broken down by the departments. We are located at 412 Boulevard and L.I., where we have the one-stop shop, also with the city one-stop shop. The next slide talks about who we serve. LIPH is basically public housing, the traditional legacy housing that we have throughout the city. In those units, we have a breakdown, but basically 2,138 units. Then we talk about the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which we work with private landlords. And that's about 4,916. It also depicts the average income and also the average income if a person participates in the FSS program. FSS program is a self-sufficiency program where residents learn how to improve or step up in their job, and so they will be... provide more resources for their family. You can see the difference in the FSS program is almost twice income that as someone who is not participating in the program. Then we talk about the mixed finance developments. The mixed finance developments are mixed with market rate and low income and project-based vouchers. Okay, we go to the next slide. We did talk about the available units, and then we talked about, right now, in the low-income public housing units. We have a 97... 95% occupancy rate. In the mixed finance developments, we have a 98% rate. And in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, it's 88%, which we are continuing to work with landlords and tenants to improve this. And we also create programs or additional housing to accommodate residents who are unable to find a place in the city of Pittsburgh by using a voucher. Also, in addition, we depict how many people we have on our waiting list. The low-income public housing, as you see, 2,689. Housing Choice Voucher Program, a little under 12,000. And the Project-Based Voucher Program, which consists of mixed finance developments, and it's over 30,000 people on the waiting list for that. Just a quick update on the different type of programs. What is the income? The low-income public housing program? What's the Housing Choice Voucher Program? And what are the developments? You can glance at that real quick. I'm not going to go too much in detail about it.
Sorry, we had a little technical issue here.
Oh, man. Murphy's Law.
Okay, that could work too, because I think... I think the hard copies will be better in this case.
So, you can't share?
No, I think...
Yeah. Computer died.
Yeah, I think so. At least we have the hard copy back there.
Okay, so, as we pass out the presentations, we have the next step. We're talking about Project-Based Vouchers and Gap Finance Program. The Housing Authority have created a unique program called Gap Financing. A Gap Financing allows the Housing Authority to create three times the amount of units that could create on a traditional program. Since 2016, the Housing Authority invested $47 million in this Gap Finance Program. The Gap Finance Program, as far as when other monies was put in, it was $423,641 million of activities. And the average units that the Housing Authority put money in were the average of about $81,000 per unit. Generally, to build affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh, it normally costs $500,000 a unit. By creating this program, we was able to triple the amount of affordable housing that will be available for the citizens of Pittsburgh. Since we started this program, it's 911 Project-Based Vouchers, 1,242 Mixed-Finance Units that are not Project-Based. And then the total units is 2,153 units. And like I said, the average for the Housing Authority per unit was $81,000. Traditionally, it'd be $500,000 per unit. And then another program that we have that is not Gap Finance, where developers can put in for Project-Based Vouchers. And using this program, it would generate $195 million worth of development and 311 units. So far, it would gap finance support of about $12 million. The next slide is Bedford Choice Neighborhood. As you know, the Choice Neighborhood is a competition by HUD among many cities that people put in for. The Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh and Team Pittsburgh, which we had partners like URA Communities, Foundations, lots of partners. We put in an application for Bedford, which is located on the hill, which have 411 units. We were very successful. We received $50 million, which is going to generate $520 million worth of activity. And we have, April 4/12, I think it's 4/11 units, and it's going to generate 865 units. This is going to take a seven-year process. We already have started Phase One. As you look at the different phases, we started Phase One with the CDH, which is going to consist of 110 units at $63 million. Phase Two, Robert Reed. We have started that process. And Phase Three, we're in the process of trying to get to closing. Like I said, this is seven years. The Housing Authority competed with other major cities and was able to achieve this $50 million grant from HUD, which is going to generate $520 million worth of activity in the city of Pittsburgh. But I believe it's going to be more. We also, prior to that, we had another competitive bid, Choice Neighborhood, which is located in Lomer. Where's Lomer slide? Okay, so in Lomer, we received $30 million, and we have completed Lomer. And it consists of 334 units. And we like to say that the Lomer situation is pretty good, because as you know, the Lomer is a very high-income neighborhood with Google and all the activities around there. We're able to have affordable housing of 334 units where, you know, people can live there and also Google and be able to afford to live in that community. In addition to that, we always like to talk about, we have the biggest playground in the city of Pittsburgh. It's out there in Lomer. Pretty good. So, let's get to the budget. We... We have a pie chart breaking down the different parts of the budget. Just going to it real quick. Our total budget for FY '25 is $212,951,604 million. And that's our total budget income that we were receiving. Our expense for that year equals $212,951,604 million. That's the expense that we estimated for FY '25. With the total capital budget of $41 million that we use to take care of development and build new places. We have a breakdown in detail regarding what different places where the money is going to. But the bottom line, the Housing Authority budget for FY '25 is $212 million. I mean, basically say $213 million. In the packet, we depict a breakdown with East Line item, where the money is going to be used. And then we also have a page that's talking about the Housing Authority capital budget. With a bottom line of, it's $15 million down here?
No, for the total capital budget?
Yeah.
It's down at the bottom there.
Okay, so...
It's $41 million.
$41 million. And it's broken down by development, amortization, and administration costs. Also in the packet, we have a... All the budget line items broken down into a pie chart, and also depict the percentage of the budget for each of the major end items that we have in the budget. Also, it's attached to the resolution that we took to our board that was approved by the Board, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Are there any questions?
I also wanted to announce that we are joined by Councilman Sharlin, as well as Councilman Wilson, who joined us online. I'll open up the Florida Finance Chair, Councilwoman Strausberger, if you have any questions.
Thank you. So, I want to note that you came before us not long ago to discuss, at a post-agenda, to discuss the utilization of Housing Choice vouchers and some other operational issues. So, I will not be asking questions about... I don't have any additional questions about operations at this time. And my main question is, noting that it looked like it was about $77 million received in grants and other income from HUD. That might not exactly be the right way to say it, but it looked like it was about that amount. I wonder if there's discussion, you know, as administrations change at the federal level, as we will have a new HUD Director, is there a discussion about, you know, what amount of that is locked in? What that looks like in the future? Have you had any contingency planning around anything that you... I know it's impossible to predict the future, but anything that you might kind of expect? You've seen other... You've shepherded this organization through other administrative changes at the federal level, and I wonder if you can help us understand what we might be in for.
Okay, so where we at right now? We are, we call a special agency, which is called MTW Agency. And we have a contract with the government for, I think it ends in 2028. By being an MTW agency, we have additional money to be able to create, how would you say? Unique programs that other housing authorities can follow, kind of like with a test baby. And then as we are successful, HUD might adopt some of those policies that we might implement with our imagination. As far as, we think we're good for 2025. We, like everybody else, we don't know what's going to happen. But I believe by reading some of the literature coming in from the new administration, is we feel that there will probably be an enhancement, probably vouchers program. And we have, you know, worked with landlords in the city of Pittsburgh to continue to increase that. Some of our vouchers are above market. So, we encourage a whole lot of landlords to participate. So, I think that we will be okay for FY '25. And I have a very smart staff. We have big imaginations, and we know how to use money in the proper way. For example, like I said, it costs $500,000 to build a house, and we have figured out how to do it for $80,000. So, we will continue to provide affordable housing for the city of Pittsburgh. And as you look at our waiting list, we got almost 40,000 people who need housing, affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh. So, we'll continue to find a pathway and financially and operationally to support this city.
Thank you. And so what I'm hearing is the unknowns are beyond 2025, of course, which is for all of us. And then potentially the adoption of anything that we test out here and then say, "This is a great idea. You should adopt this." We're not sure if that will... Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but one thing I'm saying is, across the country, everybody talk about affordable housing. We know how to build affordable housing. And when you talk about the Choice Neighborhood, there's only two cities that actually receive more than two Choice Neighborhoods. They're both in PA. Philly, we compete against them, but they're bigger than us. But however, I think they're working on their third one, and we have two. And so it demonstrated the city of Pittsburgh to HUD that we have the capacity to build affordable housing. And when there's any opportunity to get additional money, we can show the city of Pittsburgh we have the capacity to build affordable housing. If you give us money, we are not going to sit on it. We're going to use that money to build housing, because we know how to do it.
Is our funding for the Choice, all the Choice projects locked in? Is that...
Oh, no. Yeah, yeah. Most of everything here is locked in, right?
Right. In this budget, we estimate, I think, $15 million for Choice to be spent in 2025. But we do have the $50 million is locked in from HUD.
Okay, great.
You know, and we already spent the $30 million.
Right, right, right. Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. Councilwoman Warwick has the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here today. So, yeah, so we did talk at a post-agenda earlier about, you know, the need to bring on more landlords. It sounded from that conversation like one of the major issues was the management of the waiting list, right? And sending out paper letters and this sort of slow process to determine if someone is still on the waiting list and eligible. So, that sounds like something maybe for the first six months of 2025 to iron that out, you know?
Yeah, we're in the process, you know, using AI techniques. So, let me give you an example. If we send 100 letters out, maybe 15 people might show up. And then out of 15 people, you know, you got to process, and then you got to go back to the people who did not show up. It's a process. And like I say, I will, I think I add additional staff to speed that process up and so that we can reduce the amount of time that people have to wait for housing.
Yeah, and then maybe to, I think we talked about just sort of general maintenance of that waiting list? Like even if there's not something ready today, just kind of periodically going through and seeing if people are... You know what I mean? Connecting with people?
You're talking about purging. Yeah, we do that.
Yeah, just regularly.
Yeah, we purge, like every six months.
Yeah, so I mean, because that waitlist issue will be critical in getting new developers who are not, you know, to take advantage, and landlords to take advantage of Housing Authority vouchers.
What I didn't talk about, because my slides are not up. I think we had about nine developers who applied for Gap Financing. And I think that's... Missed that slide. The 2024. What's total units on that?
I'm not sure the total units, but I know they're in the pipeline. There's another, I believe, $13 million that we're getting ready to approve.
Yeah, we have not awarded those yet. Probably be, probably the next, well, at least it'll be before Christmas. Because I do believe the application for the 9% and 4% for PHFA goes in in February. And so we will be contacting those developers, and that's additional money that we have set aside for Gap Financing that will generate more units. It actually, once we issue any... The developer applied with PHFA for the credits. It's normally take about 24 months to build a place before we put someone in there.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, it's good. It sounds like, you know, the money's there and we know how to build the housing. It's sometimes a little harder to get people in it in a timely fashion. So, you know, I'm glad that that is on the radar. And, you know, curious about how the technology, you know, as it moves on, how we'll be using technology to do that more efficiently. The other thing I wanted to shift to was, I have some questions about RAD properties. So, well, first of all, how many HACP properties are currently under RAD?
We have... We just getting ready to close someone. And that's one. Then we have two, three.
Three, okay. Do we know which ones they are? I know what one of them is.
We have Manchester.
Okay.
We have Glen Hazel. New Pennley. Oak Hill. Oh, the fourth one, New Pennley.
Yeah, New Pennley is going to...
Yeah, yeah, New Pennley.
Okay, so, I'm so... So, you know, last year, we met and we talked about issues specifically in Glen Hazel, right? And those issues persist. So, I'm curious about what HACP's role is in sort of monitoring and overseeing the management of the RAD properties.
Yes, we have some great concerns, and there is a strategy that we have. We'll prefer to talk to you about it offline, because some of this stuff is not public yet, but we're going to do. I know that the residents like when the Housing Authority was managing the property, and there's some things I need to look in, look into, but I can discuss with you, because I don't think I can announce that right now, what we plan on doing.
Okay, because I'm looking at the capital budget. And now, I don't know if this is, would fall under emergency major... But I mean, like, so regularly, the hot water is out for days at a time in Glen Hazel. So, a new boiler...
Glen Hazel is not in this budget. Glen Hazel is an entity separate from the Housing Authority, but it's still under the Housing Authority umbrella. But the money that come from HUD go directly to them, they collect it. And we have a management agreement with them, so I can go more in detail. I know what your concerns are, and I can address those. But there's some announcements that would be too early for me to announce here, where our course of action is going to be.
Okay, because I mean, it's the boiler, you know, has been... I'd say a year ago, we met and talked about the boiler, the elevators continually breaking, and then, of course, the plumbing issues.
But the only thing, and I don't know, have he moved this yet? I have, Housing Authority will provide additional million dollars to Glen Hazel to take care of some of those concerns. But we can talk more in detail. And then after we talk, if I talk to my board, because I need some permission to do certain things before I can announce.
Okay. And then I'm also curious, what... So, you know, every few years, HUD inspects the RAD buildings, right? And then Glen Hazel, the last inspection, I believe, was that it was a C. It got a C.
Yeah.
I'm not sure when that was. 2020 maybe?
I don't have... I know they all... I know we have an average of above 80% in most of our buildings. I don't have the list with me, but we were very successful in all our inspections this year. I just don't have Glen Hazel. Somebody probably texted to me in a few minutes, maybe.
If... Well, my understanding is the last one, it got a C.
Okay.
Which means that, you know, fire hazards and other life-threatening issues in the building.
Well, when you say fire hazards, that could be that someone took the battery out of their smoke detector or something like that. It's not... Okay, a fire hazard is a fire hazard. But what I'm saying is, if you don't have, if you don't have a battery and a smoke detector because you took it out, or somebody busted out the light for exit, yeah, that would be considered a fire hazard. It's not a fire hazard where the fire chief came down to close the building down, so...
Right, but I mean, I would say like the elevators being broken and people in wheelchairs not being able to get out of their apartments, or not getting up into their apartments, which happens from time to time as well. At any rate.
Okay.
But would it be possible to send that inspection?
Do what?
Send, like, share the inspection?
Oh, yeah. Everything with the Housing Authority is transparent, and it's public information.
All right, so I'll maybe email Tony to get that. Yeah, so I mean, obviously, maintenance issues in Glen Hazel. But the other thing I wanted to ask about, because also in Glen Hazel, my team has been working, and I know that we talked about this with Murray Towers also. We didn't end up engaging. We decided to engage in Glen Hazel first, because it seemed more dire. But it was about getting tenant councils organized. So, my team has been very engaged with trying to get the tenant council up and running, but... Um, so my team has been very engaged with trying to get the tenant council up and running, but um, uh, the the I mean, you know, it I feel like the support from H A C P could be better there in helping get that because tenant. Well, I don't know if you wanted to speak a little bit to why why the benefits of having a tenant council.
Well, well, having a tenant council, you've been in some of those meetings with me, where I talk to the tenants to tell them the benefits as far as they get a budget. Uh, they can have activities, they can have a voice at the Housing Authority and 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 uh they can have a process uh uh managed in the building as far as uh house rules and stuff like that. What we found out is that the units that lots of residents are satisfied, they're not willing to want to participate because they're okay. It might be some things every now and then, but it's not a point that someone want to volunteer their time to put in the work to be a tenant council, even though you and I have talked to people and you and I have been in meetings with people, raised their hands and say yes, and then after we leave, the conversation goes soft. So we'll continue to work to try to make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I I definitely would, because like I said, I mean, there's certainly at Glen Hazel, a strong desire for a tenant council, right? We've had extensive meetings now. I know that the residents tried to do a tenant council, but they didn't, you know, the process is so detailed and they didn't follow the right process. And so they had an election and then were told that they didn't do it right. And that was, of course, somewhat demoralizing. So we're kind of back at it again um with my staff and with um
Third party.
With some third party, right. But it would be nice to have um more engagement from H A C P to help. I mean, it's one thing to send letters out to people and say, hey, come to this, but actually do some community organizing around around the building.
Agreed. We can do more. We can do more.
Yeah. Um, at any rate, um, okay, well, I don't, I guess I don't have too many other questions. Uh, I really do want to see um improvements in the in the the voucher program so we can get more landlords on board. I think that's critical, and I think it's an easy win, right, for landlords, if it's just if they have the if if the um the sort of customer service, so to speak, and the speed with which they can get people in those units, right, can can match up or at least somewhat more closely to to just sort of being, you know, market, regular market.
I I I think we made a uh significant improvement in the housing choice voucher program. I'm not going to go back to the genesis of our problem. I think I did discuss that. And and like I say, our vouchers right now uh in different parts of the ser- different parts of the city, our vouchers are above the market rate. So we have lots of uh landlords landlords who want to participate in the program. And we have special programs set up for, you know, if you're a new landlord, you get a thousand dollars. Uh, if you participate in some of our program, you get additional incentives. And so we will continue to continue to improve our program. But the but it's it's moving in the right direction. We feel very positive about it. And we feel that we still, you know, still create additional programs for landlords. We also have a landlord council. There's a lot of things that when we meet again, I think that uh in the conversation, I said, you know, when we talk again in the next six months, and we can evaluate, you know, where we at. So that's what I'm working on.
Okay, all right. Yeah, well, I mean, definitely at Glen Hazel, those two things, just figuring out, I mean, those big repairs, the boiler, the elevators, the plumbing, and um and getting that tenant council. Because at the moment, it feels like it feels like the process is they call me and then I call you. And then the thing gets fixed, whatever it may be.
You got a great personality. You're gonna call you all the time.
Which is fine, but that's not, you know, it would it would be more efficient to have.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. I mean, they're gonna always call you, so so don't don't change your number. So but we will um entertain that process. The heater, so I mean, the boiler is working now, uh, elevator is working. We we are working out with some contractors and and like I said, some things I can't talk about right now until I discuss with my board.
Okay.
But but it's moving in a positive direction that you I think that you will agree with.
Was the boiler replaced?
Not one replaced, it was fixed.
Okay, but it's been fixed like a bunch of times.
Like I say, um, I allocated some money.
Yeah.
And like I say, it's uh it's not under Housing Authority. It's a RAD project that they received their money from from HUD. But um we have a positive solution coming up.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Director.
Uh, Charlotte, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Charlotte now has the floor.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you all for for being here. Um, I I feel like we we talk a lot. We've spent
Sure, we do.
Uh, a lot of time in the Housing Authority um properties and in your offices and and working with you uh so far this year. Uh, we do have four of your um, four of your properties i- in our district. Um, so we've been spending a lot of time there. We were able last week, actually, to um, similar to to Councilwoman Warwick, uh, creating tenant councils has been a strong desire from our office. Uh, last week in Morse Gardens, we had the um, I guess the uh pre um, are are you looking to run meeting, um, which was, I understand is, you know, these are are not just uh, it's not just the process that you would like to see or that I would like to see. It's the process that HUD dictated. Um, so uh, we were there for that and we're we're happy to be the third-party observer and do whatever we can um to to move that along. I think actually because it's, we want to do it when the tenants are available. It's going to be a little challenging for me to be it. I think Alicia from my office will will end up being the um third-party observer. But uh, it is something we want to see in um, three of the four properties. I I think it's going to be very hard for us to get a uh tenant council in Fennello, as you mentioned, because everyone in Fennello seems to be happy um and frankly, too happy to do something. So um, you know, but I I do think in the other uh, the other properties, it's something that we really want to push through. We want to uh not have uh more conversations about need the need for a tenant council. We just want to want to see one, want to have be able to engage with one. So um, I I appreciate you helping me move that that ball forward. And uh, it makes it it frankly, makes it an easier property to um represent when they have a strong tenant council. Um, and and makes all of our our lives a lot easier here. I I do, one of the things that I I I problem with having arms here. Um, the one of the things I do want to mention, uh, and I'm trying to look through your capital budget improvements here. Uh, can you tell me what planned improvements are happening in Arlington Heights?
Um, I don't know. We had uh, I demise.
Yeah, we don't have that in here, but we can certainly get you that. There's a roll-up to these general mod items from the mod department.
Okay.
So what we have, yeah, we have the general, we have general budget, but we can dig down to the subordinate uh developments and take all the activities that we have planned at those developments. And I can, we.
Arlington, Arlington, we have five hundred and twenty-nine thousand in the budget for Arlington for next year.
Five hundred and twenty-nine for capital improvements?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so there's some relatively large improvements. I think that when we were up there last time, we we looked at that we need, I'm assuming five hundred and twenty-nine is not enough for a new playground?
Oh, no, that's that's in play. That's in uh, if I remember correctly, some of these things are already in play. This is for F I twenty-five. And some of the things that we haven't played, probably already was in probably last year's budget. And so so I know we are talking about a new playground.
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
I I would like to just add in to your to your question. So we we do have a continuing appropriation from prior year budgets
Okay.
for mod, and roughly sixty-five million is on, you know, that we're in the pipeline.
Okay.
Arlington specifically has an additional six million in the pipeline in addition to the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, so six million, well, that probably is enough for a playground. Um, the uh we had talked about, and this kind of came from residents, but also um the H A C P employees that were working there, talking about um modifications to the parking lot to um create a basketball court over there. The the parking lot is is largely unused um or or not used to its full capacity. What we could do to turn that into some level of a basketball court um and a play area there as that is a um, a a big area for raising families up in in Arlington Heights. Um, just wanted to see where we were in in, you know, a capital investment there.
Uh, I think there's rooms for, I I don't know the details. I know we's we talking about putting a playground up there. Uh, I know at Homewood, uh, we putting a playground plus a basketball court. It might be the same uh template that we probably use at at Arlington. I just don't know offhand. I know that we allocate the money for uh activities up there. So I would say, yes, we can do that.
Okay, yeah. I I and I I'm apologize. I'm drawing a blank on the the woman who was recently hired as the um property manager up there. Um, but she had some some really great ideas that I I would like to, you know, see uh, see some movement on. If if that's uh possible, and if you've got six million for uh improvements up there, it sounds like it sounds like that is possible. So uh, that's great to hear. Uh, um, I also wanted to ask, I know that last year when we talked, there was a a big problem with air conditioners on backwater um and getting the window units uh up in in all the the locations. Is that something that's uh been solved?
I'm gonna say yes, but if uh, I remember the air conditioning problems. I remember having a discussion with my staff about it. Um, and I would say yes. I don't think air conditioner will be a problem next year.
Okay.
Uh, we normally, we normally keep in stock air conditions that we can use if a person have a problem. Same with heaters. We we are prepared for any type of emergency, so um that could have been, I think you and I talked about that. And and if you talk to me about it, it probably got taken care of.
I believe that.
Uh, I just can't can't. There's a thousand things that happen in a day.
That is your record. Yes, I believe that.
Right, okay. But but I but I believe that that was taken care of.
Okay. And then the, so the air conditioners were the kind of the stopgap in Arlington, because Arlington is on a chiller unit.
Arlington is a
Geothermal.
Geothermal.
Yes.
Right. And what we what we we uh, we went out and hired a consultant, and a co- consultant is looking at the geothermal now. So we, I think it been what, fifteen years? Uh, fifteen years since we put the geothermal in. And uh, we looking at and see what are the new modernization to geothermal? What is the new technology? Because what they used to do, what they still do, they go down the ground, get the heat and bring it up. But uh the mechanics that they use to do that, that could be improved. We probably would be replacing those systems with the new technology.
Okay, yeah, um, uh, I I just please don't send any residents my way that are hot next summer. I don't, I know that it's it's uh, well, I guess it's forty-three. I know that's not too bad. But uh, next summer, I I don't want any hot residents in Arlington.
No, you you won't.
Okay. Um, I I appreciate that.
Okay.
Uh, the we've talked a lot about the housing choice vouchers and and I appreciate you coming and having that discussion with us. I do think it's a it's uh, I think Councilwoman Warwick, did you call for that when we had it originally?
Yeah.
I do think it's something that we should be continuing to to have kind of ongoing post-agendas about that to find out where we are in the process, what improvements are being made. I know that your um, your uh authority has been uh reestablishing itself with different uh personnel and um as they come into their own here, I I do want to see what improvements uh can be made in that in those programs. Although I do have, you know, four of your um properties in my district, I'm sure I have uh even more residents that are affected by your programs from from other ways there. So uh, obviously, it's something that that we care a lot about here.
Okay, well, we, I think we sent you a map. Uh, we were concerned updated where all the housing choice voucher programs are are located throughout the city, which is basically about five thousand vouchers throughout the city. And we have, I think we broke them down by council districts. And so uh, we can refresh that and get that back out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, but but just continuing conversations about how the the process is improving and and where we might be on that.
I believe we back for a post agenda in six months. That what we agreed on. So we will be back in six months.
All right, good. Uh, I I'll look forward to that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask you about, um, and there have been a series of um uh reports lately about the security company
Okay.
that you've been working with. Is there something that you would like to to clear the record with here? Um
Yes.
With Ms. Dantini's team?
Yes. Uh, what I want to clear the records on is that the editorial is a somewhat opinion who may not know anything about HUD regulations. The Housing Authority is in compliance with HUD regulation regarding these two security companies. And uh, that's why HUD has a O I G. They have FBI and they have all their investigators for someone who have opinions who do not know what the Housing Authority day-to-day in compliance to federal regulations and make comments. So what we'd like to do, we would like to invite those people who like to write those comments to come and visit Housing Authority and also to come and visit our developers. Uh, there's a group of developers that we'd love to talk to them because they think that the information they put out is misinformation. We would like to get the record straight, to meet with the people who write these comments, to deep to show what the Housing Authority is in compliance with with federal regulations and all the good things that we do. As far as developments, there's conversations about vouchers uh and development, you know, why the Housing Authority use voucher money to build housing. All that conversation, instead of people making assumptions, they should come and visit the Housing Authority. So I think we're going to work with uh the community to have those open conversations so people can actually understand exactly what we do in compliance with the regulations. Ready?
The only thing I'd like to add at this time is we did receive the resignation letter from three G, and the Housing Authority has accepted it. And their last day will be December eleventh. And uh, between operations and the security team, they're working out the details of a plan to cover once they are gone.
Okay. How long is that was that contract for?
I'm not sure. I don't have it in front of me. We can we could definitely get that for you.
Okay, just just curious, yeah.
Yeah.
I what what I would say from from my perspective is that it, there there's a lot of very good things that you're doing in the Housing Authority. I think that you know where your weak spots are, and I think you are working uh to strengthen those those up. This I think is a, I I don't want to say distraction, but it is a, it it overshadows some of the other good things that you were you were doing. And I I do hope that you're able to clear the record quickly there. Um, and we can we can talk about putting new playgrounds in in Arlington, because that's what I would prefer to talk about.
Yeah, so, yeah, I I think you're right. And that's why we want to clear the record. And like I indicated, is editorial is someone's opinion who do not understand the complexity of federal regulations and how we do stuff. There's no wrongdoing at the Housing Authority, and it's it's a very transparent agency that we invite anyone to come and talk to us, you know, and and Councilwoman, uh, she always talk to me all the time. I'm I'm valuable, as as she say. But like I say, it's a transparent agency. We in compliance with federal regulations. If anyone want to sit down, have a conversation with us, instead of making assumptions and opinions, just to talk about facts, just talk facts. That's what we need to talk about, not assumptions, none at all.
Sure. And and I just want to add to your uh contract length uh term question. Typically, our con- our contracts are three years with two one-year options following the the standard guidelines. But we could certainly get that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I like I said, I I just, I hope that you're able to to clear that up quickly.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're gonna clear that up. And and like everyone who knows me here, everybody have accessibility to talk to executive director of Housing Authority. My door is open to everyone.
No, I I appreciate that from you. There's there's some employees in in our own city here that I can't get a hold of as as well as I can get a hold of you, but
Right.
it does help that you're a D three resident and uh, you know, so I know where I know where you live.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Charlotte. Um, now we are joined in person. Councilman Wilson was good enough to leave the virtual world and join us in person. So the floor is yours. The floor is yours, Councilman Wilson. Councilman Wilson was good enough to leave the virtual world and join us in person. So the floor is yours. The floor is yours, Councilman Wilson.
You know, ti- uh, COVID times really helped us out with, you know, to manage, uh, you know, different meetings at, at one time. So, Tha was listening in, obviously on the, online. So appreciate the comments that other members have. Had made or questions they had asked. And so, um, back here again, our annual visit. Uh, good to see you.
Good to see you too, the councilman.
And, uh, we've had some productive, uh, meetings. Um, with, uh, residents at, you know, different, um, whether it's Presley or Northview Heights throughout the years. And even, uh, you know, a very good one, a couple of months ago. At, uh, at Presley. So, and then also, I just want to state, you know, for the record, you've always been very responsive to. My office and myself. So just want to recognize your, um, you know, dedication to, to being available. I just wanted to go through a couple of things that I always ask, since this is our annual, uh, public check-in. Which, you know, I think, you know, there's a long history with, um, you know, the, the inspections. So I just wanted to go through the. Just how, how we're doing with Northview. I know there has been significant progress made since four years ago. And just, just curious how that's going.
Hopefully someone is sending me, uh, me, my staff who is looking, send me the, send me the scores or send it to, uh.
Can you just roughly go through? I don't, I don't actually need the exact score.
Regarding, regarding, uh, four years ago, uh, uh, as you know, we got some very low scores. And we immediately started working on it. We allocated money to it.
Like side, new sidewalks.
We put new sidewalks in. Uh, we, uh, uh, I think our score was above eighty. However, uh, we went to every unit. We did every work orders. Uh, I think, I, I can't, she gonna tell me in a few minutes, uh, how many work orders that we have at. We probably have thirty thousand work orders at Northview over time that we probably closed. Uh, we went to every unit. Uh, work orders continue to, to come in. But the bottom line, like I said, we went in, we changed the, uh, we upgraded. We put new concrete in. We put, okay, here you go. Let me see, Arlington was ninety-one, Effra was ninety-one, Homewood was ninety-three. Northview was in eighty-seven, Presley was eighty-three, Carigiri was ninety, Silver Lake. Mixed Finance seventy-seven, Mary Tower was ninety-three, uh, P A Bigwell was eighty-three. The Legacy was eighty-two, Alleghaty seventy-six, our scattered sites north was seventy-three.
What about Presley?
Uh, did we do Presley yet?
It's in there somewhere. Eighty-three?
Yeah, there is eighty-three.
And what is the federal government?
You have to get above, you have to get above sixty.
Okay.
And.
And we were at, in Northview.
We're talking about beforehand?
Not, not to bring up, um, you know, old news. I'm just curious to know where we came from.
Well, I think it was down in the fifties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how'd you get that up?
I got a smart staff. However, uh, we, we, we put a plan together. Uh, we allocated resources. Uh, we planned this. We went to every unit and, um, talked with the residents, to help with the residents. And that's how we was able to improve our scores. And also, and also HUD did change some rules. But outside of that, um, we made a significant improvement.
That's great, uh, from, you know, fifties to high eighty, eighty-seven, I think I heard.
Right.
Great. Thank you for that. And, uh, curious to know, what'd you say Presley was eighty?
Presley was eighty-three.
Okay, what do you think's bringing down that score? Not that it's still passing, but. I heard some nineties. I'm like, you know, we're always in competition with each other.
Well. I, I, without going in detail, but I do probably have persons behind me that probably answered that question. Michelle, you want to take a shot at it?
Yeah, we're at the table.
Yep, at the table. Induce yourself, Michelle, and your, and your job title.
Certainly, thank you. My name's Michelle Ralston. I'm the senior, uh, the senior director of facility services for the housing authority. Um, and councilman, your question specifically about Presley, what brought down that score a little bit?
Well, I don't know what it was previous. I'm just saying, what's, you know, the, the number one score you can get is a hundred. Yeah, what, what do you think's keeping us from getting up to the nineties?
So specifically for this year's inspection, we had some, as Mr. Binion mentioned, HUD changed some of the criteria. So we experienced a lower score, certain deficiencies in the area of electrical. Uh, particularly GFIs and outlets. And so we have a contract for that work and we do anticipate that we'll see a reduction in deficiencies. Particularly at Presley, but also throughout the authority.
Do they have to be upgrade the GFI or the GFIs bad?
Uh, a little of both. So we're upgrading, um, GFIs. The new HUD regulation is. Um, any distance, any outlet within six feet of a water source must be GFI or single pole. So we're making those adjustments as necessary throughout the portfolio.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for going over that. A couple of other things I want to touch on. Were the, uh, the investments in Northview. So in terms of the, uh, the spray park. And, and, and the, uh, water tower, I guess.
No water tower.
No water tower now.
No, no water tower.
Okay.
Um, so on those two, uh, on the water park, we are working with PLI, uh, in the process. I gave, we had to get approval to put a tank. I still don't understand why we got to put, got to put an underground tank, uh, uh, for, to retain the water. Um, hopefully working very hard to, to try to get that thing open this year. As far as the water tower, uh, we had to build a water tower because we were going to build a new high rise. And we still gonna build a new high rise.
Yeah.
Uh, but the pressure that was going up north because it's going straight uphill. Uh, we didn't have enough pressure. So the Friday department wanted us to put a water tower in. Uh, working with PWSA and my staff, we was able to get enough pressure. So we, 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 we don't need a water tower anymore. And now, you know, that's definitely did not want a water tower.
Nice.
But, but it's okay. We took care of that.
Yeah, that'd have been a big cost.
Yeah, well, costs and worry about kids climb up there. It's a mess. They want a water tower. Graffiti and all kind of stuff. No, no water tower. So we okay.
Could have been a promotion for you though, H A C P.
Oh, yeah. And lights.
So I, I appreciate, um, you going over that with me. Uh, looking forward to December fifteenth. It's a little, little mini city in the streets.
December fifteenth.
It's like, uh, maybe you're not familiar with the term, but you know, it's like where you, it's just like community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm looking forward to.
Different departments that come. I think it's December fifteenth.
Yeah, we'll be there.
That's where all the horror questions come, when the residents come and I have, um, at those, uh, city streets, we have this big like. Pointer, like phone pointer. When someone's asked us a question, we just phone point to you.
I would, December fifteenth.
Have the big pointer.
Yes, I will be there.
Point to you.
Yeah, I just, I just try to figure out where I'll be on December fifteenth. I know I'm gonna be at now. I will be there.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the partnership.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Wilson. I just have a, a few questions, uh, be- before we close out. Um, Director Binion, can you, um, give a brief synopsis of, of a presentation that you provided? You know, um, you know, for, for the board that was, um, laying out, uh, the progress that has been made. Um, in, in, in the housing choice voucher program as well as, um, training that's been done and, and, and new staff that, that, that has brought, been brought on.
Okay, so, um, which, which I met, uh, I think fifteen months ago. Uh, you know, come out of pandemic, we, everyone had employees issues, but I'm not gonna use that excuse because I can use that. But however, uh, most of the people, um, I had to, or they decided to leave. And we had to create a whole new staff. And to learn the housing charge voucher program, housing specialist, it takes, uh. At least I say fifteen months. So we created a cohort training program. The cohort tr- training program was designed so each person would learn one piece of their job. They would master that piece and then they, then they move to the next piece. And at the time that we started, we analyzed the proficiency of the task of, of the, of the staff. And the staff was at maybe fifteen percent. We probably had about two veterans or three veterans. And over time, um, and they went through this, um, program, they got better and better. And so at one time, we used to only process maybe fifty contracts per month. And right now, we're doing about a hundred and forty. It used to take us over a hundred days with this old staff. And now we're processing contracts in less than sixty days. We doing inspections, we doing everything in very, uh, speedy and fast ways. Uh, we getting the landlords paid in a timely manner. We working with residents. We open up the one-stop shop where residents can come down. We also set up, uh, using technology where, where, uh, residents can do Zoom calls with us and, and all kind of stuff. I feel that the program really improved. We also added, uh, we added a program that, um. If a landlord put five thousand dollars in, into their property, we will pay them more on their half payment. And by doing that, I think we created additional, I think two hundred landlords participating in the program. And it costs us an additional two million dollars. However, by implementing this program. We was able to stabilize residents because what happened was the landlords in the city that once it used to cost eight hundred dollars to. To rent a one bedroom. So right now it costs twelve to thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars. So by creating this program, we was able to stabilize our residents because landlords start coming to us. They, they want to kick people out. Because the market went up. They're like, hey, you paying us eight hundred dollars, we can get twelve hundred dollars for these units. And so what they started doing was they start, uh, when it was opportunity to change the rent. They take a, a tenant rent and change it from eight hundred dollars to twelve, thirteen hundred dollars, creating a, a four or five hundred dollar delta. So we had to come up with a program to sustain the opportunity for residents to stay in their units. And that's one, that's one of the programs we use. As a matter of fact. Um, probably overestimated because right now, uh, we got lots of landlords who are receiving more than the market rate. From a house and chart voucher program. So our assumptions was, at least my assumption at that time, that we would, we would catch up to the market. But after we came out the pandemic and then a mo- a whole lot of buildings in City of Pittsburgh start coming open for rent. What happened? The market dropped and we right here. But eventually, we gonna be at the same place. So I think we've been very successful in working with our landlords, uh, working with the market, going back to HUD, asking for special. Uh, consideration for the City of Pittsburgh. Uh, in the past, we used to, you know, one flat rate would be for the whole city. What we set up, we call tier system, depending what part of the city you're in, that's what your rate of a half payment to the landlord is set. That was very, very, uh, important to landlords. So I think I'm, I'm waiting to come back in six months. I might get two inches and say three months. But the bottom line, I think we, we, we are moving very fast. I think, uh, is, it's a big improvement. And like I said, we, we had to go through transition. Lots of companies had to go through transition after the pandemic. Uh, and, um, I think we're moving in the right direction.
And, and just for the public's education, like what is a half payment? If you could just explain.
Oh, half payment, I'm sorry. The half payment is what, for example, a residence, a resident paid thirty percent. The government paid thirty perc- well, resident rent is based upon thirty percent of their annual income. And for example, if we use a thousand dollars, okay, so a resident would pay three hundred dollars. And the government housing thought would pay seven hundred dollars. That's seven hundred dollars is considered a half payment. Now, if that landlord decide to move that half payment, that rent from one thousand. To let's say fourteen hundred dollars. That resident would, in the past, be stuck with trying to pay that. The residents, residents were unable to pay that. So then the landlord would kick them out, evict them. Uh, so we had to put programs in place to sustain that those residents could stay in those units. Lots of residents, uh, lots of landlords start asking for some significant amount of rent increases. I mean, normally we would get fifty dollars in rent increase, you know, normal. But after the pandemic, they was asked for three, four, five, six hundred dollars. Increase in their rent. But we was able to stabilize the force and we, we have more people in the housing charge voucher program. Uh, than we had last year. We continue, uh, to, we continue to improve. In a very positive and aggressive way.
Thank you. And, and you had mentioned that you've decreased the processing time.
Yes.
Down, down to sixty days. Just hypothetically, in a, in a perfect world, what, 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 like how, how much more could you decrease? What would be like the optimum time?
So generally what happened, run through the process real quick. A, 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 a person would get briefed, they would receive a voucher. Okay, they take that voucher and they go and try to find a landlord. Then once they find a landlord, they poke, get together and file out some paperwork so that we can come and do an inspection. And so for example, if, if landlord intended turn in an inspection. Request for inspection, uh, let's say the fifth of January, okay? I think our average time to schedule is, uh, maybe ten days or something. Okay, our inspector would go out there and inspect the unit. However, I would say sixty percent of units on first inspections, they fail. So kind of like the landlord trying to figure out what they need to fix. And so once the landlord has thirty days after they failed the inspection to correct those errors. And then once they do, they contact the housing authority, the inspection come back out, once they pass the unit. If the unit is passed on eleven and, and the resident cannot move in until we finish the contract. However, practiced by landlord, which we do not encourage, they always let the tenant moves, say, move in. The landlord would get retro payment. If they move in on eleven, payment will start on the fifteenth. Once we complete the contract and we, it'd be retro payment back. And the goal is, the HUD rule is sixty days from the process. And then when that unit passed. To process and get the contract done. And like I said, when we was in a bad situation, it was taking us over a hundred days to get that done. And we have corrected that action.
Thank you. And, um, and then you talked about, I think it's seven thousand units in total citywide. Is that correct? Is that a good estimate?
We have, um, okay, uh, we have four, uh, seventy-four hundred vouchers. And we have roughly five thousand, uh, tenants who use those. And, um, we continue to, uh, put vouchers out. And the voucher money that we do not use, we put in gap financing. So we create additional affordable housing that way too. So our program with the money we received from HUD, we're gonna use vouchers or we're gonna build new places. And as you know, the housing authority probably had a ribbon cutting or groundbreaking about every thirty days. So.
And, and, um, and, and, and by your, your estimate, in, 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 in a, in a perfect scenario, and we know we're not in a perfect scenario. Between the housing choice, uh, voucher program and what you call your legacy properties. At, at a maximum level, how, how many units, you know, could, do you think, if you had all the resources? That, that you could utilize, could the housing authority bring online to, uh, uh, play your role in addressing the affordable housing crisis?
Well, on affordable housing, uh, if, uh, we are ninety-five percent occupied in our legacy. Uh, units and we continue to put people in there all the time. Our goal is to be at ninety-seven percent because you normally have a three percent. Um, rate, loss rate, uh, in our s- mixed finance, I think we had ninety-eight percent or ninety-seven. Now I'm just looking for the percentage. Okay, so in our legacy properties, ninety-five percent occupancy rate, our standard is ninety-seven percent. Uh, mixed finance, finance developments, occupancy rate, uh, is ninety-eight percent. And, uh, the standard is ninety-seven percent. Housing charge voucher program is at eighty-eight percent and, and. And our goal is ninety-seven percent. But we don't waste the money because we go and build. Units with gap financing, which we have, um, I guess I talked earlier, all the units that we build. And we giving awards some more next week. Uh, I think maybe nine developers. Uh, that's gonna be building, uh, units here in the next twenty-four months by using project-based vouchers and gap financing.
Thank you for that. And that's a, a great segue to my, my next question. Just philosophically, as, as, as an organization. You know, what balance are you striking between expanding your legacy units, um, providing gap financing to developers? Um, as well as expanding the housing choice voucher program? Is there a certain percentage that you're shooting for between the, the three options?
It, it's kind of funny you say it because I've kind of figured that question would be, if he asks. The theory is that if we increase vouchers, uh, lease-ups by using individual vouchers, we would decrease the development, because the delta surplus money, you would say, is being used to build new units. Now, under the new administration, I don't know what's going to happen. But the, the argument is how do you balance your city? Do you have lots of vouchers? And there have been cities that could have lots of vouchers. Some executive directors spend all their money on vouchers, and then I'm not going to say those cities, but I just think there's some cities that have lots and lots of vouchers and do not have a, a, a correct balance. It has an impact on the city. Um, I mean, those conversations are going to go back and forth. But right now, based up on reality, the reality, we don't have enough landlords to accommodate the, the vouchers that we have. Instead of sitting on the money, we go and build our own houses. And even though they are project-based, they are vouchers, those, um, gap financing, they are vouchers. And so, I, I, if we get, we get a thousand landlords tomorrow, then the development goes away. So it's, it's a balance, and we haven't, people have different opinions, how, how we balance this. And that's why I like to have the open discussions with communities to talk about this. This is ongoing conversation, vouchers versus new developments. So, and when the development costs on average are five hundred thousand dollars per unit.
Right.
And a voucher, what, what we say voucher is, what, eight hundred ninety-five dollars per month, somewhere around there.
Yep, thank you. I, I just have two more questions.
Okay.
My penultimate question is, uh, um, a question that actually came from, you know, a number of vendors have reached out, as you know.
Okay.
Me, me and Touchbase often, much like Councilwoman Warwick, people reach out to us about issues, and, and some of the vendors have reached out, who I guess have been with you, and we, and we can talk off-line specifically about who they are. I don't want to put them out there like that at a public hearing. But, um, um, you know, they just mentioned that, uh, a couple of years ago, they were getting more work, and some of, the, the work has slowed down. Is there a, a different process, you know, uh, with the vending process, or, you know, a certain criteria? And I just wanted to just ask that for the question, the record, because I have gotten some inquiries from, uh, vendors that, that have worked with the housing authority for a number of years, who feel like the amount of words that they've gotten over maybe the last twelve months has fallen off.
Okay, uh, I don't, I'm not sure, having fallen off, maybe just people who had contracts with us, and we completed the work. But I would say that we have fifty-seven million dollars worth of contracts out there that we've been putting out, uh, for some of the modernization work that we got to do, and coupled along with all the developments that we're building. So, uh, we can, um, like I said, we're very transparent.
Sure.
Uh, we can meet with those contractors and make sure that they understand how to do business with the housing authority. We can do that again. Um, but, uh, we have lots of money to spend, lots of money for contractors, lots of money for people to improve in their life. So we transparent, willing to meet with anyone. Uh, but what we say, two hundred, two hundred and twelve million dollars stacked on what we got in the past? There's lots of money out there to, to obligate, to bill, replace, fix service contracts. So I just want to make sure people know how.
Sure.
To do business with the housing authority the proper way. Then, oh, like I said, I'm very transparent, I wouldn't meet with anyone.
Hmm.
And explain it to them with my staff.
Absolutely, and I, I can vouch for, vouch for that, and I appreciate all the times that you've been very responsive. And I'll be sure after Thanksgiving to reach out to you directly.
Okay.
Um, a, about the vendors in question.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I, I appreciate the response. Um, my last question, you know, is more of a thirty-thousand-foot question. What would you say is the biggest challenge facing the housing authority for fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
Landlords, need more landlords. Bottom line.
Thank you.
But at the same time, I got to balance it with developments, so. But we, we don't have, we don't have enough landlords. But I think that with the, with the improvement of payment plans, I mean, not, not the improvement of the payment schedule, the enhancement of that, uh, we have landlords gravitating to us. I had to close one program because I ran out of money, and we are going to re-induce that program in FY twenty-five. It's going to be a little different, but landlords are waiting for me to open that up. Okay, it's for, for higher payment standards.
Uh, thank you. Director Ben, do you have any, uh, parting shots, or any of my members have any other follow-up questions?
Yeah, I do, just real quick, because it made me think of it as, as, as you were asking. So, well, one thing is, uh, just the reminder that there, there, there's like a pre-inspection process, right? Like, if you're interested, you can get pre-inspected.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we do have pre-inspections, um, um, yeah, pre-inspections, because you page your pre-inspection, you get a certain amount of time, that if you get someone in there, the pre-inspection turns into a real inspection.
And how long does the, does the inspection last?
I just, I think it's sixty days. I think that they could get the pre-inspection, and it'd be good for sixty days.
So if you have a tenant, if you're interested in becoming a housing authority.
Hmm.
Unit, and you have a tenant currently who is not a voucher holder, can you get an inspection? Like, and you know they're going, like, you know they're going in a month or whatever, you know? Can you get an inspection in the meantime?
I believe so. Yeah, we, we try to work with everyone, so I believe so. But if the tenant is not a voucher holder, the tenant has to, somebody has to, the person has to move out. You're right, the person has to move out. Now, as a tenant voucher holder, then we can work with the landlord to, what we call a leasing place, right?
Um, the other question I had, and this was because we have our PWSA later today, is, um, because I, I recall you mentioning this last time at the Post agenda, just around utilities. So do the payments, do those include utilities?
Uh, it's, uh, it's decide, uh, the landlord determine if the tenant going to pay the utilities, or the landlord going to pay it. And now, what we see now, because I'm not sure PWSA behind me, but the water bill is going up. So landlords are trying to switch, instead of them paying the water bill, have the tenant pay the water bill. But, but that is credit in the calculation for their rent.
Okay. And I wanted to ask you this, because this will come up with PWSA, is because, um, I, I've heard of cases of folks getting a, so the PWSA, like, the water bill stays with the landlord. Is, is this a problem that you see as well?
That's a problem.
Okay, so, and, and frequent, I just wanted, because I wanted to be sure.
Well, the problem is, a tenant can move into the unit, and they're supposed to get the water cut off, or they might get it cut off. Um, PWSS, PWSA do not go after the tenant. They just, they just transfer, they just transfer the bill into the owner. And sometimes the owner may not know about it, and then they get just a surprise bill. So I have not discussed that with PWSA.
Do, have you seen, uh, cases of eviction due to water, non-payment of water bill versus non-payment of rent?
I don't think I, I can't say, I don't.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
All right.
I mean, it's a possi- it's a possibility.
Because it goes with, so if the tenant's not paying, and it's right.
I know, I know, okay, let me go back. I know landlords have evicted residents who the residents supposed to be paying the water bill, but they did not pay the water bill, and the water bill is calculated in, into the calculation for rent. We deduct that from their rent. And then, in some cases, where some tenants receive a check from us, and if they don't pay the water bill, then the owner end up having that bill, they take them to court. Right, and so I guess, yes, people can be evicted for not paying the water bill.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, to clarify that before we go into that, that conversation. Okay, that's all for me, thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank the housing authority for being here, Director Benyon, thank you so much. I look forward to touching base with you after Thanksgiving. Everybody have a wonderful, uh, Thanksgiving week and weekend, and enjoy the time, the very well-deserved time spent with your family and loved ones.
Thank you, I appreciate this, and look forward to seeing you guys in the future.
Absolutely, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Now, I'd like to invite the good folks from the Parking Authority, who've been waiting patiently this morning to join us at the table. And while the good folks from the Parking Authority are joining us, I ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. The mission of the Public Parking Authority of Pittsburgh is to provide and maintain affordable, safe, and clean public parking throughout the city of Pittsburgh, to uniformly enforce parking ordinances and laws of the city of Pittsburgh and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the collections therefore, to advance the economic progress of the region, and to do so with the utmost commitment to customer service. The Parking Authority is responsible for eleven parking garages, thirty-four off-street lots, one attended parking plaza, the Mondorf, and over seven, or nine thousand on-street metered parking spaces, and thirty-three residential parking program districts, and also oversees the operations of the Pittsburgh Parking Court. Councilman Wilson is Council's representative on the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board. And a quick overview, um, and I, I will stipulate that these are the numbers that are in the city's twenty twenty-five capital, or operating budget. Um, these are revenues from all of our parking taxes, not just the Parking Authority, but there is an estimated fifty-three point six million dollars for parking tax revenue, uh, an estimated ten point five million dollars for meter revenue, and a little over eight million dollars for Parking Authority tickets. And also to note, in Chapter two seventy-two of City Code, twenty-six point seven five two million dollars of parking tax is allocated towards the pension annually.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. Now, uh, for the Parking Authority, please introduce yourself, including your titles.
Good morning, I'm Dave Onorato, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority.
I'm Jody Hart, Chief Financial Officer.
Now, begin your presentation.
Uh, we don't have a presentation per se, but thank you, Peter, for the overview. Uh, that was most of the background from the authority. I would just, uh, reiterate, of the fifty million dollars of parking tax, the authority's contribution to parking tax is seven point seven million. Uh, meter revenues, uh, gross meter revenues for twenty twenty-five are twenty-one million dollars, with the city share being sixteen point four million, and PPA share being four point six million, based on the co-op agreement we've signed with the city. Uh, Parking Authority tickets in twenty twenty-five is ten point six million gross ticket revenues, uh, with the net, uh, city share being seven point two million. Uh, last week, at our board meeting, we did pass our twenty-five budget, the board approved our twenty-five budget. Uh, total revenues of fifty million point, fifty point one million dollars. Of that, uh, garage revenues account for twenty-seven point two million, or roughly fifty-four percent. Meter, uh, receipts account for twenty-one million, or forty-one percent. Those two line items alone account for nine, just under ninety-seven percent of our, our budgeted revenue numbers. Our total operating expenses for, uh, twenty-five's budget is thirty point seven million. We also, uh, had a capital budget of eight point five million, with the majority of that for garage structural repairs. And we also prepared a second budget for our Parking Court, which is ten point six million. So our two budgets together equal about, uh, sixty point eight million dollars. And our projected payment to the city in twenty twenty-five will be twenty-five point nine million dollars, based on the twenty-five budget that was approved last week.
Thank you. Well, I'll open it up for questions, uh, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, thanks for joining us today, it's good to see you both. Uh, how is the Parking Authority doing in a post-pandemic era? I know that among, of all the authorities, and even probably compared to all the city departments, Parking Authority was hit hardest during the pandemic. How is the comeback from that going?
We're still coming back, I think there's going to be a new norm. Uh, we're not going to reach the, uh, pre-pandemic levels. Uh, uh, last month, uh, at this time year-to-date, we're about six million off our base share of twenty nineteen in gross revenues, when it was pre-pandemic. Meter revenues are coming back slightly better than, uh, the garage revenues. They're down probably about, uh, utilization's probably about seventy-five percent on average throughout the system. Prior to COVID, we were at ninety-eight or better every day. Uh, that's due mostly to the, uh, remote working from companies, and we're seeing a significant drop in leases that didn't, uh, come back.
Hmm, so the big, bold purchases by, by companies that had, you know, had them for the employees?
Yes, or the, the employees who just, you know, transient parking in the garages. That's why the garage.
Yeah.
Uh, is seeing a harder hit than the, uh, street meters. And when people come into town now, they're more apt to go to the street parking rather than the garage parking first.
Got it, okay. And, um, I know that cities in general across the country are seeing success in bringing people, you know, to events. So like, events are back, we see it in the cultural district, like, in sporting events and concerts, like, that is the driver of any kind of economic benefit of, you know, anything happening in cities right now, as opposed to, um, downtown commerce. Are you, have you been talking about that as a way to capitalize on, you know, even, even dynamic pricing around events, or anything that you can do to sort of capture some of that, um, like the revenue where it is?
It is true, we're seeing, uh, people coming downtown for events, or the North Shore, or South Side for events. Uh, we're capturing that parking, uh, we're working with, uh, city on different ideas to try to create that. But we do have, uh, our board approved the event parking, which we're going to revisit, revisit, uh, in the next couple of months to see if we can, uh, take, uh, advantage of some other facility sites, uh, locations to do the event parking. Uh, the demand's there, when there's an event on the North Shore at AccuShore Stadium, or PNC Park, or the Cultural District last night had a show for the MJ, uh, event, and we've seen a significant number of parkers downtown for that. So, uh, we are prepared for that, and are able to handle the crowds and the demands when that occur.
Great, great. Um, I guess when it comes to, this is going to sound like it's, um, you know, focusing on RPP, but it's really about, you know, do we have the, do you have the, the staff and the capacity to, to be able to enforce RPP areas to the, the full extent, so that we're, we're really, you know, you're, you're, you're receiving the?
The short answer is no.
No, okay, okay, yeah. Because it's both for like, you know, making sure that everyone's, was working as possible, but also for the revenue, right? So.
We have roughly thirty-two or thirty-four RPP zones, uh, that need enforced every day. We have street cleaning enforcement, meter enforcement, signage enforcement, uh, special detail enforcement. So, uh, we're working creatively with staff to, uh, come up with a schedule to seem like we're more places than we are. So we're, you know, want to be visible weekly in all the areas.
As a deterrent, yeah.
And we're taking advantage of technology to, uh, make us more efficient. Uh, and want to thank the city and city council for passing the, uh, legislation for ticket-by-meal on streets. We're almost there to roll that out live, we're in a pilot program now testing it.
Okay.
Uh, there is a few glitches we want to just correct before we go out. There are software issues and picture, uh, photo issues before we go live with that. That'll make us more efficient, we'll be able to cover more territory and more zones, uh, with the, uh, number of staffing we have.
Okay.
But we are done both, uh, we have two unions. Uh, ASME Union covers the on-street operation, and Teamsters cover the garage operations. And both are short significantly since the, uh, pre-pandemic. And worse, even in the garages, we're finding ourselves sometimes we have to close our garages and raise gates, because we don't have the manpower to cover those shifts. And by contract, when the garage is open, it has to be, uh, a man person there from these Teamsters.
Hmm, or do you sometimes close exits because of that as well, or is that not an issue?
Uh, we have to, uh, raise the exit gates if there's no one there, because we can't entrap people in the garage.
Got it, got it.
There's always cars in the garage when we're closing.
Right, 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 okay, got it. Um, yeah, and, you know, on that, um, I, I mean, I'd love to follow, follow up with you a little bit more after not, not a, a council budget hearing, but I have heard significant, um, kind of, um, a number of concerns about the transition to the RPP portal, which of course, you know, then would be people renewing, and it'd be revenue. And so, follow up with you on, on some of the, um, just to get some more details on that later, but, um, and, you know, where to direct people to, but, um, yeah, hopefully that's, hopefully that is, yeah, hopefully that is working its way out of the system.
We, we had more difficulties than anticipated in transitioning from the software to a new one. Uh, the portal is up and running now, we have over twenty-seven hundred applications. It came through the portal, they're now, uh, going live, that we went through. So we're caught up, and it seems to be working now. So we're hoping, uh, the new, uh, permit area will go out, we have one go out every month, so we're going to see how it takes for, for December. But we're caught up with the, uh, over the twenty-seven hundred to apply through the new portal already.
Okay, okay, great. I don't have any further questions, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, the floor is yours, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thanks for, for being here. So, um, well, I, I assume. So, um, well, I, I assume based on the response about, uh, enforcement in the metered areas and the residential permit, that there, that there isn't much capacity to sort of relieve the, the police of just sort of removing abandoned vehicles or anything, or that type of thing, sort of in, on non-metered areas?
That, that is correct, we, we had early discussions with them, but again, our meter enforcement, the majority of our officers only work till six PM when we're enforcing the meters. So, uh, we don't have staff after that. When most of the calls come in, they're in the, uh, enhancement district, the South Side, Lawrenceville in the evenings and that, when we don't have staff out there, that's why we can't be, uh, sent, we can't send them out on calls, uh, three, I want one calls.
Okay. Um, uh, just curious, uh, cause I always sort of am thinking about, you know, workforce development and opportunities for, for young people. What, what does sort of the entry level pay for a, a Parking Authority enforcement officer?
Um, the starting rate actually is nineteen forty-eight, um, or just over nineteen forty-eight for somebody less than two years and then they'll transition after two years and that's the ASME.
Okay, so it'd be two years at, at, at about nineteen dollars, and you need a driver's license, I assume?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, and what about the garage attendants?
They're, they start at twenty-twenty, they're at twenty, twenty dollars and twenty cents.
Twenty dollars and twenty cents, oh, okay.
And these are twenty-five rates, they go up every year with a huge contract.
And do they need a driver's license?
Yes.
Oh, they do, okay, okay. Why, because they move between garages or?
They may have to valet cars.
Oh, I'm tracking, I'm tracking, okay. So if, but, but if someone has a driver's license, that's a, is, is that sort of the one big requirement or are there other, other, um?
The big, what we're seeing, the big issue is, uh, we're losing a lot of potential applicants for both ASME and Teamsters due to city residency requirement. We've had probably in excess of seventy to seventy-five people just turn the deal down, offer it down because they're not willing to move into the city.
So the city residency, okay. And that, that seems like the biggest roadblock for hiring is the city residency, okay.
That's across the, that's across the board, not just for the union. Um, we've lost a lot of positions for, um, even other, uh, other areas for being a house away or two houses away. We've, we've lost some very good candidates because of it.
Okay, okay. And do you often see young people come through, like in their, I don't know, nineteen, twenty?
Uh, we do see that for the, uh, probably the enforcement officers more so, uh, than probably the Teamsters we see that, but the other ones are probably more professional level, they might be a little more older, the late thirties or forties, but it's hard to tell, we could have a wide, a wide range of candidates that, you know, from all fields and ages.
Okay, and if you do start, so let's say, so you have a driver's license, you come in, is there, what's sort of the training? Is there like a training period? Is it pay, yeah, how long is the kind of, to get people ramped up?
Uh, we do have our own house and, uh, in-house training. We'll train our officers with, uh, senior officers until we feel they're ready to be on their own in the field. And the same with the garage, uh, personnel, they're trained in-house by, uh, the managers and, uh, senior staff there, uh, and the attendants because they have to know the operations of all the revenue control equipment. So there is trainings on both and we do them in-house.
And, and is that paid, is that like on-the-job training?
It's on-the-job and it's paid.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. Um, okay, uh, and then I guess, uh, oh, you might, it was just with the residential part, and I know that we have a meeting to talk about, but, you know, we're, the city is looking at, you know, lots of, yeah, we're trying to increase the density of housing in the city, you know, and there's some change, and there's folks who are worried about, you know, how that, how that impacts parking, right, in their, in their communities. Um, uh, so with the residential permit parking, um, I mean, obviously, I, I, I am a proponent of, um, discouraging families from having more vehicles than they need, right, like parked on the, on the streets, so, um, are, so, so we're raising those rates slightly at this point, right?
Yes, there's a proposal in the, uh, city's twenty-twenty-five fee budget, I guess to take the twenty dollars, uh, annual permit fee to forty and the one dollar visitor's pa, annual visitors pass from a dollar to ten dollars.
Okay.
But to address your point on, uh, discouraging people from having excess number of vehicles, I think we should look at in the future to, uh, increase the, uh, permits on a per, per permit basis. So if you have five vehicles, the first one's forty, second one's eighty, third one's maybe one twenty. And that would discourage, you know, an escalating rate based on the number of vehicles you have. We've been looking at that, we haven't proposed that for twenty-five, but it's something that may come up in twenty-six to discourage people from having excess number of vehicles.
Okay, okay, and then also when it comes to the permits, is there like a, like a limit per street or a limit per, like say, I, I don't, you know, to, to sort of keep from giving every, you know, so many permits that then there's still not enough space, you know? Like there's some, there's more permits than there are space?
There is a limit, but I, I don't wanna misspeak and say what that is per household and by, uh, same name.
But there is a limit, so you can't just buy like ten permits for a, okay. So a landlord, for example, who had, I don't know, five students living in a, in a house or something like that, wouldn't necessarily be able to get permits for all of those.
I do believe everyone, if he has five students in one apartment, is entitled to a permit, but that address is only entitled to one visitor's pass. So there is not a limit in that scenario, I believe.
So there's not a limit to the number of permits, so if each student had a car?
Yes.
Maybe that's something to look at too, just like, you know, anyway, just a thought. Uh, and then my last question, oh, go ahead, yeah, please.
They're all, uh, decisions, policies set by the city and I believe, domino, I mean, the authority's, uh, responsibility here is the enforcement and issuing the permits. We just follow the guidelines, parameters established by, uh, the city and then approved by city council.
Okay, okay. And then, uh, my last question is just because the, you know, the, the NFL draft and it's a big deal, it's sort of this big exciting event, and just to say, are you, um, cause, um, there was talk about planning to make sure, you know, with transportation, so that we can get people moving into other neighborhoods that they might not normally, you know, you know, stuff gets concentrated around the stadiums and whatnot, but to, to get people, you know, these visitors checking out other neighborhoods throughout the city using public transit or the bikes or whatever, are you part of those conversations to see how parking could be leveraged to kind of get people out of their car and moving around the city rather than driving around the city?
I haven't been, but I, uh, just was, uh, uh, approached to be on the Committee for Parking and Transportation with the city and the, I guess, the Steelers and the NFL. So I haven't participated in that yet, but I will be going forward.
Okay, cause I mean, that would be great if we can figure out, even if it's like parking outside and come in or whatever, just a way to sort of get people, for the day anyway, out of their car and then moving around the city. Yeah, okay, that's it for me, I don't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Charlotte, the floor is yours.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Council Chair, and, uh, thank you for being here. I love talking about the Parking Authority, uh, I get really excited about this. I think that the way that we plan our cities and urban planning is, is all based on the work that you do. Um, so I'm always very excited to, to, uh, learn about what's going on and, and kind of the ways that you're thinking of things. And I do wanna talk about some of the RPP things, cause I, I, I parked up on there. But I, I wanted to start with, um, with the Authority. Uh, you mentioned a lot that you're, you're handling the enforcement and, uh, the permitting, but if budgets were not a, a constraint here, what, what are the things that you would really like to get into, uh, with the Authority? Where, where are the areas you'd like to move into, um, if you were able to?
First of all, we'd bring our staffing level up, uh, to the proper level to, so we can properly enforce the city and state codes throughout the city.
What, what are, what are the constraints on that?
Uh, we're having difficulties, uh, post-COVID, uh, hiring and retaining, uh, employees. And I think the big block, as we discussed, or as the city residency requirement, uh, both union contracts come up, uh, the end of twenty-twenty-five, so we'll be negotiating that again and we're, you know, uh, anticipating, uh, significant negotiations on wages based on contracts that have been going, we've been seeing settled recently with different unions throughout the city and state. Uh, then if we had that, we would look to, uh, uh, expand our, and make sure our capital, which we do a good job on now, we have a str, we're required every year to do a structural engineering report of our garage facilities. Last year, all the garages came back good except for one, it was Fair. It was Melon, which we're in the process of now of doing roughly a six million dollar repair and that will bring it up to standard two to, so most of our garages right now are, uh, uh, they're useful life for a good fifteen to twenty years now. Uh, we would invest heavy in technology, we think technology is the way to go based on the curb management and in the garages. Uh, there's a lot of technology out there and it's, it's just, uh, a costly thing. I think, uh, as we were the first in twenty-twelve and thirteen to do, uh, pay-by-plate in the US, we're also the first city with the assistance of city council to be, uh, rolling out ticket by mail on the streets. And all the major cities are looking at us to see how, uh, how that works because it's so important to the industry. They want us to be successful at it to, uh, because they're looking to roll it out too. We, uh, had discussions with Chicago, New York, they came to visit us to see how we're doing it, how the legislation got passed and that. So, uh, we're kind of a leader in the industry and we wanna maintain that and then, you know, just come up with technology and, uh, look for additional, uh, sites if we had unlimited budgets to build garages in different neighborhoods where the needs, uh, the demands there.
All right, well, I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I wanna drill down on something though quickly. Your staffing levels, uh, and I know that this is something you and I have talked about a lot, um, and we've already discussed it a little bit at this, this briefing here. What, short of residency, what else could we, could we look at for changing or for getting our, our staffing levels up? I, I'm assuming pay rates are, um, are an important thing and I know a lot of that is, is dictated by union negotiations. You know, wha, what can we do, wha, what else can we do? What, what is the top, you mentioned that the bottom rate is nineteen forty-eight or the, the first-year rate for enforcement agent is nineteen forty-eight. What's the top?
Um, over two years is twenty dollars and sixty-three cents rounded up. Um, and that's part-time, by the way, they have to start out at part-time before going to full-time, full-time is twenty-one seventy-nine.
Okay, and that's, so if you're there for over two years, you're there for over twenty years, that's still what you're making?
For the union contracts, yeah.
For the union contract, okay.
Yeah, there's not a graduated scale, that, once they hit top rate, they stay there.
Okay.
And let tell the new contract is negotiated.
And that increases every year based on the quantity.
Sure, right, with the co-op.
They're with full benefits too.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I wonder if there's, you know, there's, there's other things we can do there to, to retain and?
I don't have all the, uh, the methods we're using, but we do have an HR director, he's very creative in trying to, uh, locate different agencies and organizations or getting our postings out there. Uh, we're getting the responses to the postings, but again, we're having trouble bringing them on. We'll get a lot of people, we get no-show for interviews or they accept a job, they don't show up the first day. So it's just, uh, you know, been a difficult, uh, road since COVID.
Yeah, uh, do you require college degrees? You, you mentioned the driver's license requirement in residency, is there college credits?
No.
Okay, so you could be fresh at high school. Are we doing anything to, uh, create a Pittsburgh Public to Parking Authority bridge?
You with the school district?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I believe our HR, uh, manager has been in contact with the, uh, public schools, uh, departments to see if there's anything there. Or we also, I think one of the council members came up with the idea of, is there some way that our officers can be, uh, pre-enter a level for the police department since they're on now for the officers? So we're, we're, you know, I don't have all the answers that he's doing right now, but he's reaching out to many different avenues to try to get people in the door.
Maybe, uh, if the chairman would agree, maybe we could have a, uh, briefing on some of the HR strategies that you're, you're looking at. Um, that, that could be helpful for us. I, I mean, I know that in my district, we struggle a lot with the enforcement. We care, every, every community meeting, we talk about homelessness for, for an hour and then we talk about parking for an hour. And, uh, and I would, you know, and one of the things that we're always talking about is there's, there's not enough enforcement, there's not enough bodies, um, you know, to enforce the RBP program. But, uh, at some point, I, you know, I understand it's, it's a post-COVID world, but at some point we have to say, well, this is the world we're operating in now, we have to start thinking differently and, uh, and start adjusting. So I, I do want to, you know, see the movement there. I, I'm glad that you are renegotiating the contract, I think there's, there's gotta be a way that we can, um, make that work better. I do wanna talk, so the RPP fee is going from twenty to forty?
Could I, could I interrupt one second, Mr. Trump? We, I feel to mention too, in the South Side, we ran a pilot program with stationary cameras in the lots to, uh, assist with enforcement. It's very successful, we're in the process now of rolling that out for, uh, RFP to, uh, do hopefully ten to, uh, fifty percent of our lots. That will eliminate the need for officers going in that lot, it's all through automation and it'll free up the officers for other enforcement areas. So that's another, uh, avenue we're taking to try to do more with less.
Great, um, I'm all about the efficiency, um, in that department there. A, and also in the South Side, one of the things that, that we've had to do because we do have problems with, um, people pre-gaming or post-gaming in the, in the parking lots is we, we are sending our police to the parking lots a lot in the evenings. Um, so, you know, I, I think there is a balance there, we do wanna be careful that we're not, you know, sending a Parking Authority, uh, uh, enforcement agent through the, um, through the lot is, you know, another adult or another, you know, someone saying, hey, knock that out perhaps, but also they might not feel comfortable being there. Um, you know, in, uh, I think that's, there's a, there's a balance we need to strike there.
There is a safety concern with, uh, you know, myself and my senior staff and the union with the officers interacting with the public, especially in the evening, in the enhancement district when, you know, alcohol may be involved in it too. Uh, the more we can remove them from the interaction and place in a ticket on the windshield, the better off we'll be. And ticket by mail on the street will do that and the, uh, stationary cameras in the lots eliminates, uh, the individual, our, uh, staff from going in that lot altogether.
And, you know, I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of ticket by mail. I do want to acknowledge the irony of someone who's about to drive their car being too belligerent to interact with a, um, an enforcement agent and that, that is, you know, that is not a problem that should ever happen, but unfortunately, we, we do know that, uh, it still is, still is the world we live in. But, but so RPP rates are gonna go from twenty to forty and I'm, I'm glad that they're going up. Twenty has been around for a very long time.
Since inception.
And, uh,
Maybe four, I think.
Is, is far too low and, and I know that for the, uh, for a long period of time, the RPP was the lost leader in your department, that you, you know, that you were, you were nowhere near coming, breaking even on the RPP program, it was, it was an expenditure. As we move to forty, is that something, will, will it be closer? Okay, are we?
Do you wanna explain to him?
I know we can't make money on the RPP, but is it gonna be, are we going to come close to breaking even?
And, and that is, the hope is that we bridge that gap between the deficit that is now being made up by Parking Court, um, is to make that more, at least break even or try to get close to break even. So it was an, it was a much-needed, um, increase, it's been long overdue, I think. Um, I think there's gonna be some sticker shock to begin with, but, um, I think it, it, we had, we had to move that way. So yeah, we're, we're hoping to break even.
Okay. Do, do people know that, I, cause I, this is the first I'm learning about this and I, you know, I've got a, majority of my district is in RPP, I don't think anybody has brought this to my attention yet.
We, we haven't yet.
We haven't publicly advertised, it hasn't been approved in our budget, it's in the city's budget to be approved under fee schedule.
Right. Right.
So we can't, we haven't advertised it because we don't know if it's going to be approved.
Yeah, it it would be though. Once it got approved, we would definitely do a, you know, social media and making sure that everybody was aware of that.
Okay. Um, another point on that, uh in Councilman Warwick kind of touched this. I I there was a restriction that only three permits could be given to a unit before. And I don't know. So you're saying there there's not a restriction that five people could have?
I I believe that's the case. If there's uh multiple individuals in a unit, they're all entitled to a permit. That unit's only entitled one visitor's pass. The only thing that came up with a three that uh I'm familiar with is the visitor's pass is only good for three days in a row. You can't park here for the fourth day. Uh, we can verify that and send it to you, but they're all spelled out in the uh uh each individual R P P district. Well, I think they're all the same. The enforcement's different for each district, but we can follow up and send you what that is.
Actually, um, they they got a hold of me. There's three unrelated persons in a household can get a permit, yes. But but the people, if they're related, it's unlimited.
Really? Okay. Because I I mean, I I do know some people that have gamed the system.
Yes.
And I I thought that was why. Okay. Um, I I really, really like and I've been advocating for um since I got here, the idea of the escalating fees. The the first one being forty, the second one being eighty. I don't know. In my mind, the third one can be a thousand.
I think it double should double every time.
But it it the idea of this, especially this week uh in South Side, is when all the Duquesne students go home. You could park a semi tractor trailer anywhere in the South Side right now. It is the all the complaints we get about parking all year long go away this week. And what we can do to discourage um Duquesne students from bringing cars when they don't need them. And a lot of that has to do with investments in public or uh in in public transit, and I I get that. And investing in um encouraging Duquesne to have more of a shuttle service and all of those things. But you play an important um uh stick role in that, and I, you know, I I know that uh if you're a Duquesne student and you're being asked to pay another couple bucks for your uh your sticker or not, sorry, no, my God, uh, your your R P P pass, yeah. I don't even want to say sticker, uh, but you know, you're you're being asked to pay a little bit more. It may not be the the discouragement that we want, but if it's a little bit of a discouragement, if it takes ten more cars off off the the streets, I think that's a that's a huge win for us. So I do really want to advocate for that escalating um pay scale. I and, you know, whatever I can do to make that happen again. I think that could be additional funds that you can pay for additional enforcement agents. Um, maybe collect additional revenue, the the whole shebang there, so.
We can have that discussion in twenty five for the twenty six proposal.
Cool. Um, another thing I want to talk to you about is the transfer. So when the Parking Authority transfers its funds or the the city's funds to the city, it is one check that comes and then our Department of O M B basically has to break it out or or finance. I think finance is the one who does it. Break it out into to who gets what. This makes um the South Side and or South Side PED very challenging for us to figure out what we can budget for next year because we only receive one transfer a year. You're you do a great job of keeping us up to date on what we're making um as the years progressing. But it's tough for us to verify that with um, you know, the the powers that be over here to make sure that we can um we're not overspending when we want to buy holiday lights or um pay for the clean team or something like that. Is there any rationale from your perspective on why we can only do this in one lump sum transfer? Or could it be done maybe twice a year, maybe four times a year or something like that? No?
You take how you take.
Now, it based on the co-op, it it's specifically in there that we send one payment over and then how you guys allocate it. If it's earmarked for something would be on your side.
Yeah.
So it 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 is part of the co-op that we're only allowed to do the one payment.
When does that co-op uh come up?
It doesn't.
It doesn't. It's just it's it's there forever.
One of us have to.
So we have to amend it?
Yes, but I don't believe that can be amended because it's paid. The uh the meter part of it, which is where you get your money, the South Side PED, is paid to the city by February fifteenth or thirtieth. And we do not uh release it the same year because we have to, uh, by our trust, ensure we meet our debt service coverage. If we debt service coverage not meet, then the payment can be held going to the city. Uh, we've never had to, uh, we never not met our debt service coverage, but that's why it's always held to the following year. So it's not just because it's a schedule, but it's required by our trust that we hold that money till we show we met our debt service for that fiscal year.
Interesting. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I uh it would be really helpful for us if if just for, there's a lot of times where I'm like, we've got the money here. You know, Matt Matt sends me sends me the emails. We're we're actually doing very well in the PED. But the we don't have the money in hand, so we can't say that we can afford um an increased rate for the clean team or something like that. So, okay, that's helpful to know. Um, I think that actually covers my questions here. I could probably talk a lot more about some more things I'd like to see, but I think my other colleagues are getting anxious here, so. I'll pass it on. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Charlotte. I truly appreciate your enthusiasm for all things parking and your questions. Uh, the floor is yours, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And uh Director Honorato and and Jody. Sorry, I can't remember your last, what's your last name?
Hart.
Hart? Hart?
Arts.
Yep. Good to uh see you again here at the table. I was just asking this um our um clerk staff to print out the ordinance that I overhauled going back uh three years ago now. Because what we're talking, like we overhaul you, you know, there was a different contractor for the um for the website for the R P P program.
Yes.
And as this conversation keeps, you know, kind of um brewing here about where we're at with prices and who how many permits can be uh rolled out for household. I just wanted to bring up the legislation that I had worked on to overhaul the R P P program. And I'm just curious, like, how closely, like, how did that rollout happen now that I'm, you know, now this conversation is?
I I believe that uh our rules stayed the same from the original legislation to the new one. Uh.
What'd you say?
Our our responsibility authorities stayed the same, uh enforcement and issuing the permits.
Yeah, but the rules changed.
Rules, uh, no, the rules didn't change. I I believe the responsibilities changed. It shifted from P L I maybe or city planning to D O M E. And but uh when each R P P district is created, that's when the parameters are governed with the input from the residents and then D O M E and then final approval, I I believe my understanding is they're brought to the city council for final approval. But uh from uh, I think the the major rules of the number of permits that can be issued to a household, related, unrelated, all the same. But the hours of enforcement may be different from area to area based on the need of that community.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this now, um, and then we can have obviously further conversations about that. And then um.
I believe it's been working well, the new.
Yeah.
Legislation.
Oftentimes, as a legislator, pass legislation, you know, in the control of, you know, um, you know, how that department is uh rolling out that that those new terms. Um.
We have a good uh working relationship with D O M E, and I think that's why, one of the reasons it's a seamless transition. Uh, we're costing communication with them if something would come up and we need to discuss it.
Okay. Well, it's been a pleasure being on the board.
I appreciate all your service.
For the past, um, it's been four years now. And um it's been it's been interesting, especially since I think I got on the board right at right at COVID when it was happening. So that was definitely, that was definitely different.
It was. It was different.
And what are we up to with the amount of um, like, when we always compare twenty at the board meetings? We always compare twenty nineteen numbers to where we're at currently.
Uh, year to date, uh, when the twenty four budget, we're about six point three million short of the nineteen numbers in total.
Okay, and that's that's for garages?
That's everything. The garages, uh meters, uh, that's in total, but the majority of it's coming from the garage revenues.
Okay. Um, I'm just going back here. Once again, we can look at this again, but. Yeah, I'm just curious how this works because it would be important to to pick through this because there is criteria within the legislation for like how many vehicles a residence can have, like the childcare ones and all that stuff. Um, I guess I just have some concerns what since, you know, through some of the conversation that some of the questions that Councilman Charlotte had. Um, yeah, I just want to make sure that's reflected. We do have. Um, I I thought there was a like a scale rate of like for if you have more than like two cars, but that's not current?
I don't believe that's current, no.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, thank the clerk staff for printing up. I was just curious about that. The um, the authority provides how much revenue to the city?
We're estimated to give the city in our twenty five budget, twenty five point nine million dollars. And that's coming from a gross revenue of fifty, so it's, you know.
And how much was it in twenty nineteen?
I think it was just uh just a tad over thirty million.
Yeah, which.
Was it the high at the point, probably the high?
Yeah, which this is, I guess, everything should increase, but that, I guess, has.
It has been increasing yearly that what our payment is to the city. I think we were down as low as twenty at one point.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're back up to twenty five point nine, and it's all based on formulas, based on revenues.
Yeah.
And it's all outlined in the co-op agreement, how the payments calculated.
Right. I appreciate, we definitely appreciate that. And then um, is there anything that the city can do to assist the Parking Authority better so that we can uh increase revenue? I mean, is there anything we need to do?
Yeah, we made one of uh early discussions this year, uh, look at some of our, not maybe so much the meter rates, but our ticket fines, which is a council uh approval or decisions. Uh, it's been a long time since we visited those, and there's a the thought process, you know, since we've been raising some of the on-street rates that some people feel was justified, that I can not pay parking. And if I only get ticketed four times a month, I'm still better off than paying parking. So we have to get the uh relationship correlation between ticket fines and rates uh at the right level. So we may want to look at ticket fines this year.
Okay.
It's definitely, it's definitely a um a trickle effect as well. If you get more staff and you have more people enforcing, which means you're going to have more ticket revenue, but then eventually that'll turn to compliance, which then is, you know, the more of the meter revenue. So it's all kind of feeds into each other. Um, but I think that, weren't you discussing having registrations attached to fines? That we would be able to collect more?
We're working with other uh Parking Authority agencies throughout Pennsylvania to see if we can get the state to uh hold uh vehicle registrations if they have outstanding tickets. They don't have a real good appetite for that right now at the state level.
Which is shockingly low, though.
Because we, the only the only teeth we have for collection is the booty, the booting of the vehicle since the state removed the uh, we used to be able to uh attach the uh uh credit to their credit history if they didn't make payment. But we can't do that no more.
Okay. What about expanding the um the metered areas?
I think we looked at that. I mean, you have to find an area where it's going to be parked. We believe the next hot area, uh, which we haven't, we're about to tap, but we haven't yet, is Hazelwood Green. Uh, we may need some assistance there from you or council on that, but we're looking to do that. That's probably an additional four to six hundred spaces. And I think we want to do that before it ramps up and fully utilized and people are, you know, already parking there. Uh, there's a good number of cars parking there now uh that we're not charging for, but I think that's that's the next area we should look at.
Okay. And could you um, whatever you can share, can you share uh to council about the um? It was our, it was the study that was done on the 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 properties that um the Parking Authority owns?
Yes.
And and just like any, you know, like what the future might look like?
Uh, just going from memory, I mean, the one uh we had, we asked the study to be done to see which assets, if any, could be sold and we'd be uh be financially beneficial for us to sell assets. Uh, I think it came back that most of the majority of the assets are uh better off kept in our hands. We had a surface lot on the north side that uh wasn't used for parking, and uh they recommended we sell that. There was interest to that from the city and local business over there, so we we're in the process of selling that lot. Uh, we're still looking at our Ninth and Penn site since there's not a garage here for the last three years. Uh, we wanted to be able to fend off developers and with data saying, you know, if they they always want to come to us and buy the uh the prime locations and a prime garage, revenue makings, we want to fend them off with data saying, here's why we can't sell this location. But if you're interested, we could have a location over here.
Yeah. Anything else on the, um, I know there was always like some buildings that we were interested in in the South Side or?
No, with uh we've we've been looking. I know we've looked at the one on uh, I hate to disclose it, but we have our eyes on a piece of property in the, the deputy downtown area, uh, it's sort of the downtime area.
And what will be, can you reveal what we what we would do on that?
Make it a parking structure.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I guess we wouldn't open up a coffee shop.
I'm a big fan of coffee.
All right, um, I mean, I feel like a lot of my questions would just be softball questions to get more information out. Um, since, you know, I roughly know a lot of the details of what's happening. Um, but I just, you know, once again, thanks for, you know, keeping the the engine running over there and um a big money-making machine that supports the pensions at the city. And uh really, we couldn't, you know, we couldn't uh be able to operate and uh serve the people if we didn't have the Parking Authority run it running at a hundred, so appreciate what you're doing over there.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I just have a a couple of questions uh before we close out. You had talked about um the ticket by mail program. Um, first question about the ticket by mail program is when do you expect it to be fully online? And and how much, you know, increased, you know, revenue do you think it's going to create, you know, towards the gap that's kind of been built in by the pandemic?
Uh, I'll take the first part. I'll let Jody answer the harder part.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we're looking to roll it out. It's not gonna, we're not going to roll it out uh one hundred percent citywide. We're still going to have the option to do ticket on the windshield. Uh, we're hoping to roll it out in the next month, two at the latest. Uh, our plan, our goal is to roll it out in the South Side PED first, including the lots and the R P P district. Oakland, where the universities are, maybe downtime, and next April started for street cleaning uh operations. So eliminate, because right now we need two officers in a car for street cleaning. That would free up one officer. And uh so that's how we're going to roll it out incrementally, and based on that and the success of it, how we expand it.
Mm-hmm.
Take a crack at the projections.
Um, we're conservatively estimating about seventy five thousand extra tickets based on on um having the ticket by mail. Again, in a perfect world, we. Again, in a perfect world, we'd be fully staffed and be able to have everybody out. Um, but staffing will obviously um, cut back on how many cars can be out, getting the L P R systems to be able to be driving around. Again, hopefully that presence then will, um, if if they know we're out there, maybe we'll turn to compliance. So you might see an uptick in in maybe not as much in tickets, or it'll be a shift between tickets to compliance. Um, but that in conjunction with um, the cameras in lots to be able to do the enforcement as well, which free staff up to be able to be out driving. Um, but conservatively, we figure about seventy-five thousand tickets just from the ticket by mail.
And and how close does that get you to the twenty nineteen levels?
I think that ex- I think that actually exceeds it then.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. Like I said, there'll, there'll be a shift between, hopefully with the compliance, from going from the tickets to compliance, because people are going to start paying because they're knowing they're going to get ticketed, or there's a a better chance of them getting ticketed than there is now.
It's, it, it'll be in total, the shift in line item where it's coming in will be different.
Right. And and from a ballpark perspective, how many open positions for enforcement officers are there currently?
Uh, we have an open budget, I mean, an open posting. Prior to COVID, we had forty-two, forty-four officers. Probably about uh, twenty four full-timers and twenty part-timers. Today, we have a total of, I think, twenty-three officers, fully and part-time.
Wow.
So and the same with the garage attendants. We're probably down ten to fifteen positions we're trying to fill.
Right. And 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 kind of follow up on a line of questioning from Councilman Charlotte and Councilwoman. You know, Warwick, I would be, you know, very interested and get into a conversation particularly about, you know, how can we create a pipeline? You know, of of younger Pittsburghers. You know, I know, I know Westinghouse High School has a public safety academy, you know, and in many ways you know, parking, you know, i- i- is directly connected, you know, what the enforcement officers do, you know, I think there's a direct line between obviously being a police officer, EMS, or a firefighter. And I think it's worth even talking to Westinghouse about, you know, creating a curriculum specifically around, you know, parking enforcement and creating a pipeline. Obviously, not just out of Westinghouse High School, but it could be, you know, the other P P S schools as well, um, and and see, you know what that effort can do, um, as well as making sure that, you know, obviously they're older than sixteen when they graduate, so they could have, you know, a driver's license, you know, a- as well. And I, and I know that all too well, because I have a son who's going to be sixteen next summer and he he can't wait. And I'm like, man, I don't know about this. He might have to get one of those self-driving cars. But but I definitely, you know, in all seriousness, you know, definitely would love to follow up with my colleagues who are interested in creating that, that workforce pipeline so we could fill uh, fill, fill those positions. And and uh, one issue that I have a lot, you know, in my district is people complaining about folks parking on sidewalks. Um, and uh, and do, and do the parking enforcement officers do that, or is, or is that more in the police bureaus?
I I think it's both. Uh, we're, it's, it's a sensitive violation. Uh, sometimes we'll work with the, it depends on the officer too, and and the neighborhood and the neighbors. If we talk to them, uh, by, by rule of thumb, I mean, some of our streets are so narrow, it gives the drivers, you know, they're trying to protect their vehicles. If uh, two, two tires are on the sidewalk and there's room to pass for a pedestrian, we kind of let that one go. If all four tires are on the sidewalk, we tag it. But if we get a direct complaint from a neighborhood or an individual, uh, we'll go out and enforce that, but if we can't just enforce it if they're calling for their, of car parked in front of their house. We'd have to enforce the whole area and not just that one complaint they called on the street.
Absolutely, yeah. And uh, just have a couple more questions. Uh, my my one question is more ar- ar- around a policy. I mean, you know, perspective, I'd be interested, you know, in in getting your thoughts and how other um, similar agencies around the country are dealing with it. You know, we have some perspective um, legislation that will probably come before us in the, in the next several months around eliminating parking minimums uh, around development. And this is obviously something that's happening, you know, uh, all over the country. Do you do you have, have you had conversations with your counterparts at other parking authorities around the country of how parking authorities are addressing um, the push uh, from a, from a city planning standpoint around the country to a minimum, to eliminate parking minimums?
Yeah, I believe some of the cities are. Uh, we're very active, uh, myself and our organization with the International Parking Mobility Institute. It's the largest parking organization. Uh, internationally, uh, I just was chair for the past three years of that organization, so we have uh, direct communication with a lot of cities and municipalities throughout the U S. Uh, we'll reach out to them and find out, but from my recollection, uh, cities have been tending to uh waive those limits to create development. And there's some incentives to doing that, I forget. But we can research that with other municipalities are doing and get back to you, because we've been, uh, I I just, I forgot to mention too, which yes, we'll brag a little bit. We were awarded the International Parking Organization of the Year.
Okay.
Credit a parking organization with distinction through the international one. Uh, we, you know, there's ninety-five different goals and objectives you've got to follow uh, to make sure your organization is up and running. So, you know, with the best in the country, and we've been certified for the last seven years, I believe.
Yeah, and my, and my last question was just to go back to something that we all discussed uh, around the, the recruitment challenges, um, you know, with the staffing. Um, do the folks um, that are not apt to move into the city, do they mention a, a reason why? You know, is it, is it the cost of housing or is it you know, uh, like some other reason?
It it, it's the cost as well. They can get cheaper housing sometimes in the outskirts and and very close, close to the city, but that's one of the biggest things that, and just the challenges of living down here, sometimes there's not as many amenities or there's other reasons. Maybe the school system that they would, um, don't want to transport their families and have uh, children in the Pittsburgh School District. I've heard that quite a bit. Um, but I I will tell you, once they get in the door and if they are, have been city residents, we have a lot of long-term employees that have stayed there. I mean, we have one, what, forty years almost? She's going to be close to it. So we have a lot of people that have been there a very, very long time and think of this as a family. Um, we've got great benefits. Getting people in the door has been a bit of a challenge. Um, and I, just talking to some of the people in, in the H R um, uh, staff is that um, safety was an issue too, of especially with the officers, you know, when, when they're putting themselves at risk. And they're also having to enforce the areas that they live so that they have to go back into those areas. And that can be a challenge, like, well, for twenty dollars an hour, I don't want to put, you know, put myself at risk, um, having to enforce that. So hopefully ticket by mail will be an improvement. It's not going to take away all that, but that is a piece of it, especially with younger people coming up that having to be um, faced with, you know, having to um, be in a situation that could, could get them in trouble.
Thank you so much. That, it's awesome. My question to any other members have questions or if you have any closing statements?
No, just like to thank you for your uh, support throughout the year and uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Absolutely. Same to you. Now, I want to definitely thank you. Uh, happy Thanksgiving as well. Hope you enjoy your time with your uh, family, friends, and loved ones. And thank you for your time and your service to the residents of the city. Yeah, and um
And I'd like to thank Bobby for his efforts on the board. We're always calling him for stuff.
Everybody's always calling Bobby for stuff. Um, and if there are no other questions, uh, can I have a, a motion to recess this meeting?
So moved? You don't need it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need to say we'll come back?
And we'll be back at uh, one P M for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority public hearing.